It is 9 o'clock, ladies and gentlemen. Our session will now commence. All rise.
The fourth regular session is now called to order. For our invocation, may we have Honorable Salada. Please remain standing for our Pabansang Awit and Recitation of Panunupan ng Katapatan sa Watawat by Honorable Octavio.
Mga kababayan, ang Pabansang Awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiliw, kadas ang sila nanan. Alam ng puso, sa pilit ko'y buhay. Upang inirang, uyagan ang magiting. Sa manlulupe, ikapasi sinil. Sanada't kaputok sa sikuyan, sa nabi ko ang kaw. Tayo na kaputla kawin sa kagayang nilamahan. Ang isakap, watawat, uyag na tungkay na natin. Ang ituwi na talo ngayon, ang hay di ba tiniti. Luwag na palawag, walang hahatik pa si ka. Uyag ang it sa pilit ko. Ang itaya na pangkay ng amin, ang pagkay ng kahil sa'yo.
At lahat na kanan na may para sa panunupa sa katapatan sa Watawat. O ay Pilipino, o katapatan ng lupa sa Watawat ng Pilipinas. At sa bantayang tanyang sasismi, na may dangal katarungan at kakalayanan. Na pinaki kilos ng samayanan, mga Diyos, mga katao, mga kakalikasan at mga kabanasa.
Kuyanap ng sato tapado, kagayang pilit sa tungkol ng Pilipino. Ibat ibang pito, pinagkalihan-halihan na sapagat uyon na matibay na ma mahayan. Wala buhod, na sili niya, at sa mga ano na siya. Ang sanu ay taloy ang pito, kayo na, parabila na lumay. Sama-sama sa pataguyan na maya, ang pila bukid na ma katabi na mutas. Tayo rin ng kaysa, sa Pilipinas at Pilipinas para sa bayan sa. Kaya pang tahanan ito'y sangiyay. Ikas na mayaman, nung pahingay masagana. Yung kuya yang bawa, tumiha na naumpar. Sa hirap at kinahawa, kami kagapar. Wala mo loktahanan, na kayamanan. Lalupat yamanin, kultura karamanan. Kawak kamay, pagtepay na tinatumpulan. Ibang punyit isisigas sa buong sangkayan. Wala mo loktahanan, na manggagawa. Wala mo loktahanan, na mangmabayani. Gustayin katutugma at mangkiskyan. Gabit pisig sa pagunlad ang siyang minimiti. Ibang punyit, bawat ang kahit aso. Iwag ay banginong, tanginong, bawat pagta itumpuhan. Wala mo loktahanan, na kayamanan. Lalupat yamanin, kultura karamanan. Kawak kamay, pagtepay na tinatumpulan. Ibang punyit isisigas sa buong sangkayan. Ibang punyit isisigas sa buong sangkayan.
For the recitation of the Consular's Creed, Honorable Amor.
I am the Premier Counselor and Deputy Vice President of the African Union's Organizers that redound the yellow murder of my constituents in their political so-called activities and services. And I believe in public service and observe the civic principles of my leadership. And I understand that there is a look-al-in situation. We build our mind, care, and mind for our citizens. So it's true, we are citizens and we believe in all of our citizens.
I am Vice Mayor and the calling of my people is to devote myself to public service. By dividing confidence and by doing of the people, I am a leader to preside over the local legislature. That would be integrity and statemanship and shall lead the local legislature to enact measures and initiatives for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the Almighty God help me to consecrate myself for the people and their own welfare.
Please be seated. Good morning, everyone, and Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
For the third time, the 20th Sangguyang Bayan is in perfect attendance.
Since we are in corum, please proceed to the next business.
For the reading and consideration of our previous minutes, we have two minutes under consideration. First is the minutes of the inaugural session held at the Espe Session Hall on July 8, 2025, followed by the minutes of the second regular session held also at Espe Session Hall on July 15, 2025.
Any comments or amendments for the minutes of the past two sessions? If none, said minutes are adopted as presented. Next, Mr. Secretary.
For the privilege hour under question hour, Counselor Costas will be manifesting. A warding, I see. Okay. We will be awarding resolutions of commendations to our athletes, Madam Presiding, who were victorious triumphant in the recently concluded 65th Palarong Pambansa. And we request the Memorial to read the resolutions.
So we have here the different resolutions of commendation for the athletes and coaches during the Palarong Pambansa held from May 24 to 31 in Lawag Ilokos Norte, as well as for the National Schools Press Conference held on May 18 to 23, 2025 in Vegan City, Ilokos Sur. So I will just summarize the commendations. The Municipality of Palomolok takes great pride in recognizing and honoring individuals who have demonstrated exceptional talent, dedication, and excellence in their respective fields. So we have Resolution Number 145. This is a resolution commending and congratulating Quatro F. Jaime for his exemplary performance as an athlete and for winning the silver medal in the 4x100-meter freestyle relay swimming event in the elementary boys category during the 65th Palarong Pambansa. We also have Resolution Number 146. A resolution commending and congratulating Tres Sonny F. Jaime for his exemplary performance as an athlete and for winning the bronze medal in the 200-meter freestyle swimming event in the secondary boys category during the 65th Palarong Pambansa. Another one is Resolution Number 147. A resolution commending and congratulating Dave Jorrel H. Saluna for his exemplary performance as an athlete and for winning the silver medal in the table tennis high school boys doubles event during the 65th Palarong Pambansa. Resolution Number 148. A resolution commending and congratulating Francis J. G. Cueva for his exemplary performance as an athlete and for winning the bronze medal in the baseball event in the elementary category during the 65th Palarong Pambansa. Resolution Number 149. A resolution commending and congratulating Xander Jaid N. Fortaleza for his exemplary performance as an athlete and for winning the bronze medal in the baseball event in the elementary category during the 65th Palarong Pambansa. Resolution Number 150. A resolution commending and congratulating Jeffrey S. Hermanado for being recognized. Okay, this is for the Schools Press Conference. As the most outstanding School Paper Advisor in Department of Education, Region 12 Elementary Level during the 2025 National Schools Press Conference. And we also have Resolution Number 151. A resolution commending and congratulating Sir Wayne Clyde M. Balbuena for being recognized as the most outstanding School Paper Advisor in Department of Education, Region 12 Secondary Level during the 2025 National Schools Press Conference. And lastly, we have Resolution Number 152. A resolution commending and congratulating Coach Jeric Alonso Nielles for his exceptional leadership and commitment in coaching the Jaime brothers who secured the bronze and silver medals respectively in the swimming event at the 65th Palarong Pambansa. And I believe, Madam Presiding Officer, we have the presence of the coaches and the athlete. We have Coach Jeric Alonso Nielles. And we also have Sir Wayne Clyde Balbuena and Jeffrey Hermanado. May we request them to enter now.
Yes, may we request our guests to please come over. May we request also the Consulars to be here in front to give the certificates, or especially the author. May we request now Honorable Costas to give the certificates.
It is with great pride to also acknowledge the presence of Francis J. Cueva for his exemplary performance as an athlete for winning the bronze medal in the baseball event in the elementary category. And we also have Xander Jaid N. Fortaleza, also one of the baseball athletes, for winning bronze medal in the Palarong Pambansa.
Pitcher, 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 pitcher. Kilamukha mo muna. Yes. Oh, but, okay, guys, there are some other things that might happen. I mean, it's not a bad thing. 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 Si Marilain, si Marilain, wala na, wala na.
Thank you, may we proceed?
For the first reading and referral of proposed motion measures or communications. Number one, we have a communication from the Office of the Municipal Mayor addressed to the honorable members of the Sangguyang Bayan through Honorable Florence Banzuelo Carlos, Municipal Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer. Gentlemen and ladies, greetings. Respectfully requesting the honorable members of the 20th Sangguyang Bayan for the urgent passage of a resolution or ordinance or approving or adapting the following: A Supplemental Annual Investment Plan, or AIP, Number 3, Series of 2025, amounting to 60,487,718 pesos of our municipality; and letter B is reverse revision of project from 2025 Local Development Fund, amounting to 2,500 pesos of our municipality; and lastly, Local Poverty Reduction Action Plan, or LPRAP. See attached documents, MDC Minutes of the meeting of the Supplemental Annual Investment Plan, Number 3 Series, Calendar Year 2025; then Reversion of Project and the Local Poverty Reduction Action Plan, or LPRAP, MDC Resolution for SAIP Number, Calendar Year 2025; and all the resolutions of the Municipal Development Council to the effect. And this is signed by our Municipal Mayor, Honorable Bernie D. Palencia.
Be taken as urgent.
Okay, noted, Madam Presiding. Next is a communication also coming from our Municipal Mayor dated July 28, 2025, addressed to the August body through the Honorable Vice Mayor. Gentlemen and ladies, greetings. Respectfully requesting the honorable members of the 20th Sangguyang Bayan for the urgent passage of the following resolutions. The resolution authorizing the temporary closure, temporary total closure of the portion of Sampagita Road between the public market and the municipal plaza for the establishment of the party zone in celebration of the 68th Foundation Anniversary and 22nd Flomloke Festival from August 15 to September 11, 2025. Daily operating hours and schedule will be 8:00 AM to 12:00 to 2:00 PM. Stock reveal, 3:00 PM opening time, 3:00 AM of the following day closing time. And this is signed by our Municipal Mayor, Honorable Bernie D. Palencia.
Also to be taken as urgent.
Okay, noted, Madam Presiding. And number three is also a letter from our Municipal Mayor addressed to this August body through the Honorable Vice Mayor. Gentlemen and ladies, greetings. Respectfully requesting the honorable members of the Sangguyang Bayan for the urgent passage of the resolution authorizing the temporary closure of the portion of the bus terminal fronting the Panseymada Bake Shop to the corner store, Dama Di Notre Street, for the establishment of the Flomloke Carnival; and the temporary closure of the portion of the Pioneer Avenue near the municipal grounds for the establishment of the thrift market, Ukay Ukayan, in celebration of the 68th Foundation Anniversary and the 22nd Flomloke Festival from August 1 to September 11, 2025. Except that portion of the road or lane beside the grandstand stalls, which should be left open to pedestrians, while that portion of the road or lane beside the island fronting the side stalls be allowed occupation by the food carts only. And this is signed by our Municipal Mayor.
Also urgent.
And number four is a letter from the Office of the President, Office of the President, addressed to Vice Mayor, and this is still addressed to then Vice Mayor Melchior J. Hotar, Presiding Officer, Office of the Sangguyang Bayan, Palomloke South Cotobato. Dear Vice Mayor Hotar, this refers to Resolution Number 116 of the Sangguyang Bayan of the Municipality of Palomloke, South Cotobato, requesting for the issuance of a proclamation declaring August 21, 2025 as a special non-working holiday in the Municipality of Palomloke in commemoration of its 68th Foundation Anniversary. This office is constrained to deny your request. Proclamation Number 727, dated October 2024, already declared August 21, 2025 as a special non-working day throughout the country in celebration of the Nino-Akinu Day. The celebration of the Municipality's 68th founding anniversary, therefore, can be done without the need of declaring another local holiday, at least for this year, for your guidance. Signed, Annalisa Z. Logan, Deputy Executive Secretary for Legal Affairs.
For info.
Number five is also a letter from the Office of the President addressed to then Vice Mayor Hotar. Sir, I have the honor to transmit for your information and guidance a certified copy of Proclamation Number 972, dated July 11, 2025, entitled Declaring Wednesday, September 10, 2025, A Special Non-Working Day in the Municipality of Palomloke, Province of South Cotobato. Thank you. Signed, Attorney Lovely Vitale Tino Nava, Director 4.
For info.
Number six and seven. And up to eight, these are resolutions authored by Consulars Costas and Buntuian, respectively. Congratulating and commending the Flomloke Folkloric Dance Ensemble, High School Student Dancers for being the champion Kumakareit and Third Runner-Up Tinikling High School Category in the Third South Provincial Wide Folk Dance Competition during the occasion of the 26th Tinalak Festival and 59th Foundation Anniversary of the Province of South Cotobato, followed by commendation to the Palomloke Folkloric Dance Ensemble, Elementary Student Dancers for being first runner-up elementary category in the Third South Provincial Wide Folk Dance Competition during the occasion of the 26th Tinalak Festival and 59th Foundation Anniversary of the Province. And lastly, the commendation to Ms. Juana Marie Obas as Obas of Barangay Publikasyon, Palomloke, sponsored by TG Group of Companies, for winning first runner-up in the Mutsiak ng South Cotobato, 2025, during the occasion of the same festival and the same foundation anniversary of our province.
Items 6 to 8 are to be taken as one of our urgent matters.
For our late communications, we have two communications received late. And these are all coming from... Yeah, one is coming from the Office of the Municipal Mayor, and this is dated July 28, 2025, addressed to this August body through the Honorable Vice Mayor. Gentlemen and ladies, greetings. Respectfully requesting the honorable members of the 20th Sangguyang Bayan for the urgent passage of a resolution approving and endorsing the establishment of Flomloke Food Strip Night Market located at Municipal Plaza from August 10 to September 10, 2025. And this is signed by our Municipal Mayor, and attached to the letter is a sketch plan of the proposed project.
Be taken as urgent.
Number two, and the last late com is a resolution from the Barangay Council of barangay Siluay Shete, Resolution Number 2, Number 23, Series of 2025. A resolution temporarily closing barangay Siluay 7 Road to trucks and heavy vehicles in line with the barangay barangay 85th Foundation Anniversary and 12th Maissama Festival 2025 celebration from 4:00 AM of August 1, 2025 to 12:00 midnight of August 4, 2025. Ah, yeah. And we were informed, Madam Presiding, that the representative from barangay Siluay Shete is around to answer some questions. Should there be any query raised by this August body, Madam Presiding?
We will consider then as one of our urgent matters, but next time, it should be like way, way before because the... There's a protocol for submission of measures before the Sangguyang Bayan by the barangay local governments. Thank you.
Okay, noted, noted, Madam Presiding. And for the committee reports, we have no reports calendar this morning. For the card of business, unfinished business, we have none. For the business for today, second reading, for our urgent measures, we have eight measures considered urgent. First of which is the communication at the request of our Municipal Mayor in the first reading and referral, Number 1, for the passage of a resolution or ordinance approving or adapting the Calendar Year 2025 Supplemental Annual Investment Plan, AIP, Number 3 of our municipality, amounting to 60,487,718 pesos, then followed by Reversion of Project from 2025 Local Development Fund, or LDF, of our municipality, amounting to 2 million pesos; and then the Local Poverty Reduction Action Plan, or LPRAP.
May we hear from the Committee Chair on Finance?
Okay, so thank you, Madam Presiding.
Madam Presiding. Uh, actually, uh, during the time that this, uh, uh, annual investment program, a supplemental Number 3 was taken during that meeting, I was not able to attend the meeting. So I don't know if somebody here from the, uh, Sangguyang Bayan was able to attend that meeting.
Does any member of the Committee on Finance attended the meeting? So we will refer this instead to the committee for your report next session. Uh, sec, please note that, uh, the Number 1 urgent matter is to be referred to the Committee on Finance.
Okay noted, noted, Madam Presiding.
Oh, yes, I stand corrected, only letter A first. How about the items B and C, Honorable Oviedo? Also the same to be referred to you?
It's better to refer this to the Chair of the Committee on Finance.
So all items under urgent Number 1 should be referred to the committee?
Okay noted, noted, Madam Presiding. And the next urgent is also the request of our municipal mayor for the urgent passage of a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of the portion of Sampagita Road between public market and Municipal Plaza for the establishment of Party Zone in celebration of our Foundation Anniversary and Flumlok Festival and then also authorizing the temporary closure of the portion of bus terminal fronting the Panseimada Bake Shop to the corner of store Dama Di Noche Street for the establishment of Flumlok Carnival and the temporary closure of the portion of Pioneer Avenue near the municipal grounds for the establishment of that thrift market or Ukay Ukayan in celebration of our Foundation Anniversary and Flumlok Festival. Except that portion of the road or lane beside the grandstand stall, which shall be left open to pedestrians while that portion of the road or lane beside the island fronting the said stalls be allowed occupation by food carts only.
Are the Committees on Economic Enterprise and Transportation ready to discuss the matter? Honorable Octavio?
Yes, Vice, uh, good morning. Uh, before we approve, I think, uh, pwede invite natin si Engineer, no? Uh, Engineer, uh, Diaz, if, uh, we can use, uh, the, ano, uh, a terminal fronting Watson during the celebration. Kedogamay na kaayo ang space kung ano ba, wala pa siya na tapos.
Thank you, Honorable Octavio, I'm suspending the rules since so we have some guests from the Office of, uh, uh, yes, Honorable Salada.
And we also invite the traffic enforcement unit for the any questions with regards to rerouting of the traffic, thank you.
Okay, I'm suspending the rules.
We now go back to the request of our mayor for a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of the portion of Sampagita Road between public market and Municipal Plaza for the establishment of Party Zone in celebration of our Foundation Anniversary and Flumlok Festival from August 15 to September 11.
You will also include in the resolution the operating hours? Yes. So, uh, motion from the body? Honorable Dave Amor?
Madam Presiding Officer, through the communication from the Office of the Municipal Mayor dated July 28, 2025, I move for the urgent passage of that resolution authorizing the temporary closure, the temporary total closure of a portion of Sampagita Road between the public market and the Municipal Plaza for the establishment of the Party Zone in celebration of the 68th Foundation Anniversary and the 22nd Flumlok Festival covering the periods from August 15 to September 11, 2025. I so moved, Madam Chair.
It has been moved and seconded, no objections, of course, so, uh, the same, I guess, Honorable Oviedo?
Because, uh, the communication of the mayor temporary closure. I just have heard. Maybe total diri. But the our visitor explained to us it's a total closure, but the request of the mayor is temporary closure only. Meaning to say, uh, ang sundo na tutong pareha kong mangagi, na during the daytime, the partition is open to to traffic, oh, sa mga tricycle?
Hindi. Temporary tamman si gulo, temporary total closure.
Kaya nga, temporary closure.
Yes.
Pero tong ginai-explain nila kanina is total closure during the day. If you could remember. Pero ang aring gina-request diri, temporary lang ah.
Okay, so, uh, the gentleman from Pagalungan wanted to erase the word temporary and instead total closure. Did I get you, Honorable Oviedo? So you wanted the word temporary, temporary to be deleted and instead a resolution would be total closure.
What the mayor is requesting is temporary. So we will follow the request of the mayor. Not the explanation of the, uh,
I, uh, there's a total closure in the request, Honorable Oviedo?
Adalis?
Yes. Um, one, one minute recess. Dalilang, dali recess. Eh, actually may mali lang ito kayo, wala niyo nabutang abi sa ano, so nalibog si ano, si Kaga Oviedo, thank you. Shum? Um, so there's a motion. So the closure of, uh, temporary closure of Sampagita Road, no, all between the public market and Municipal Plaza during the Flumlok Festival, specifically on August 12 to September 11, 2025. Um, August 15 to September 11, 2025. Provided that the operating hours, hours will be from 8 AM to 12 midnight as one of the where assess. In unanimous sponsorship. Next, Mr. Secretary?
Okay, next is also the request of our mayor for the temporary closure of the portion of bus terminal fronting the Panseimada Bake Shop to the corner of Dama Di Noche Street for the establishment of Flumlok Carnival and also the temporary closure of the portion of Pioneer Avenue near the municipal grounds for the establishment of the Ukay Ukayan in celebration of this festival and the Foundation Anniversary, except that portion of the road or lane beside the grandstand stall which shall be left op, open to pedestrians while the portion of the road or lane beside the island fronting the said stalls be allowed occupation by food carts only.
Honorable Orbisido?
Verto Resolución, may ikwain.
Hello, thank you, Mr., Madam Presiding. What I understand is
That one, i-decline natin yan, i-decline natin.
Have it referred to the
Hindi, number, some later na urgent matters, yun, yun sa establishment ng night market. Ang later pa yun, pero this one, di ba you decided to decline the request? Oo. So, uh, yes, sa carnival only, oo. Yes, Honorable Salada?
Thank you, Madam Presiding, I move to pass a resolution denying the urgent request of a resolution for the temporary closure of the portion of bus terminal fronting the Panseimada Bake Shop to the corner store Dama Di Noche Street for the establishment of the Flumlok Carnival.
I would suggest, Madam Presiding, if we can have one of the where assess?
Without prejudice of having the carnival to other places?
Understand, during the discussion. Oo nga, deny ang area, pero ang carnival, we can have it in other places.
He
Yes, I'm on the where assess, yes. Okay, there's a motion and, uh, no objection to that matter, so the same is approved. Provided that in one of the where assess, it should be stated that without prejudice to the establishment of the carnival in wherever except for the said area, in unanimous sponsorship. Next, Mr. Secretary?
How about the road fronting the stall, the grandstand stall, stalls? Uh, and also temporary closure of the portion near the municipal ground, ano, 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 no? Ukay Ukayan, Ukay Ukay, Ukayan?
Mr. Secretary, Mr. Honorable Salada?
I think we have agreed that this matter will be referred to the committee.
Okay, so, this Ukay Ukayan and the portion of the grandstand stalls will be referred to the Committee on Economic Enterprise as ruled.
And the Committee on Peace and Order?
Yes.
What committee, what committees?
Two committees, Economic Enterprise and Peace and Order.
And the leading committee is?
Economic Enterprise.
Madam Presiding?
Yes, Honorable Salada?
Uh, because the committee environment has a concern with the, the Food Strip in the plaza because the evaluation of our Clean and Green will post, will, will be on September, we don't know. Kasi ito na lang ang huli nating baraha na naiwan, na tayo ay nanalo, itong plaza and parks. Sa ibang area, wala na. So, may concern lang sa, nagkaroon kami ng meeting, uh, two weeks ago, na kung mahal, wala ng, uh, stalls dyan during the evaluation from the province.
Okay, so please include the economic enter, ah, no, environment. So three committees for that.
Yes, with, the lead committee is the Economic Enterprise, Madam. Also, this will be referred to the tri, a tripartite committee and the lead committee will be the Economic Enterprise.
Next.
The Number 4 urgent is the resolution. And Number 5, uh, Number 4, Number 5, and Number 6 are resolutions of commendation and congratulations authored by Counselor Costas and also Counselor Buntuyan, Number 6.
Motion, please. I move for the approval of a resolution congratulating and commending the Flumlok Folkloric Dance Ensemble or the FFDE high school student dancer for being the champion Kumakaret and third runner-up Tinikling High School category in the third South Provincial Wide Folk Dance Competition during the occasion of the 26th Tinalak Festival and the 59th Foundation Anniversary of the Province of South Cotabato and also a resolution congratulating and commending the Flumlok Folkloric Dance Ensemble Elementary Student Dancers for being first runner-up elementary category in the third South Provincial Wide Folk Dance Competition during the occasion of the 26th Tinalak Festival and 59th Foundation Anniversary of the Province of South Cotabato. So, so I move Ms. Presiding and this is subject to the form and style of the SB Secretary and it is in unanimous sponsorship. Move then, no objections, the same is approved. In unanimous sponsorship, form and style will be taken care of the Secretariat.
Noted, Madam Presiding.
Madam Presiding, I move for the approval of the resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Joanna Marie as Obas.
Ah, excuse me, yung isa pa, dalawa ba, inano niya? Ah, okay, sige, continue, Honorable Buntuyan.
Ms. Joanna Marie is Obas of Barangay Population, Polomloks, South Cotabato as sponsored by the TG Group of Companies for winning the first runner-up in the Mutya ng South Cotabato 2025 during the occasion of the 26th Tinalak Festival and the 58, 59th Foundation Anniversary of the Province of South Cotabato. And this is unanimous sponsorship, Madam Chair. And I so move, Madam Chair.
Move then seconded, that unanimous sponsorship, the same be approved. Next.
And the last two urgent measures are the request of our mayor for the urgent passage of a resolution approving and endorsing the establishment of Flumlok Food Strip or Night Market located at the Municipal Plaza from August 10 to September 10, 2025.
As agreed, as agreed earlier, it should be referred to the Committee on Economic Enterprise, Peace and Order, Environment.
Okay noted, Madam Presiding. And lastly, the Barangay Resolution Number 23, Series of 2025 of Barangay Silway Shete entitled the Resolution Temporarily Closing Barangay Silway Shete Road to Trucks and Heavy Vehicles in Line with the barangay ATV Foundation Anniversary and 12th Maissama Festival 2025 Celebration from 4 AM to Ag, of August 1, 2025 to 12 midnight of August 4, 2024, 2025.
To accommodate the barangay officials of Silway 7, we will suspend the rules or take a recess for 10 minutes. Honorable Octavio?
Uh, I move for a resolution for temporary closure of Barangay Silway 7 Road to trucks and heavy vehicles in line with the barangay ATV founding anniversary and 12th Maissama Festival 2025 in celebration from 4 AM to 9 AM on August 1, 2025. 2025 for in celebration of their, uh, ATV Panran on August 1. Pamanlan na siya.
Motion, no objections, the same is carried. Next.
So this will be from 4 AM to 9 AM, so 5 hours only, 5 hours. Okay noted, Madam Presiding. And for the scheduled second reading, we have none, third and final reading, none. Unassigned business, none, let's go to the announcement.
When will you be available for the case against PB ng Pagalungan? We will, this is referred to the Committee of the whole. So tomorrow, I think, uh, magbasa pa man kayo, so I think I will give you two days. How about Thursday, okay lang sa inyo?
Uh, Madam Presiding, just an observation. The complaint submitted, uh, in relation to our ordinance on administrative cases uh, section as to the form, I think it is non-compliant with the form. as to the form, I think it is non-compliant with the form. Uh, which is, uh, according to rule three, complaint, section five. How initiated administrative case may be initiated by any private individual or any government officer or employee by filing a verified complaint against any elected barangay official? The complaint must be accompanied by affidavits of witnesses and other evidences to support and filed in twelve copies. It will also be initiated motoproprio. And the complaint shall be addressed to the Sangguniang Bayan and, and, uh, uh, yeah, the complaint shall be addressed to the Sangguniang Bayan and shall be prepared in the language known to the complaint and in a judicial affidavit or in question and answer form as to praise the respondent of the nature against him and to enable him to prepare for his defense. The complaint, okay, hmm, so it should be on judicial affidavit form. Question and answer style or form.
So that will be, na lang, next week, that will be the report, so it should be, we will ask for the judicial affidavit. Okay, so any more announcements? Yes, Honorable Lumayag?
Thank you, Madam Presiding. Uh, on Thursday, nine AM for committee meeting for cooperatives and associations, nine AM, thank you.
Honorable Orbisido and then Honorable Oviedo.
To all PCL members, we will have officers, members that meeting. You are invited together with your staff, they can also register. Date July thirty-one, time, you can register between these hours from eight-thirty until noon time because it's a whole day of air. Venue is check Seafoods, Dampa at Balmore Street, Coronadal City. Registration is for five. See you there.
I just allow the request of the staff yesterday because I'm thinking of if everybody is going to Cebu for the Neo. But if you and Honorable Lumayag will not go, then the budget will be given na lang instead to your staff, if you, if that is okay with you. Because yesterday I declined because there's no budget already for the travels. So, uh, okay lang sa inyo na staff na lang, so hindi na lang, basta 'yung iba hindi sasama sa Cebu, kasi kung every, everybody will go to Cebu, then your budget sa Cebu, indeed, also, uh, no, no more Cebu instead, ah, okay. So sino ang mag-CEBU lang? Ah, so six, only six.
Suminin 'yung magpa-CEBU, you will not be attending?
Okay, we will, we will discuss later after the session na lang, so it's a summer later, Honorable Falcone, then Honorable Oviedo.
Uh, Committee on Economic Enterprise, Peace and Order and, uh, Environment, uh, nine-thirty tomorrow.
Yes, Honorable Salada?
Committee meeting on Health tomorrow also.
Okay, tomorrow is a busy day. Um, please stay also, I have some like five-minute concern lang later. So, uh, let's adjourn. Um, session adjourned at eleven nineteen. Let's raise for the closing prayer to be led by Honorable Bytus.
Let's bow down our heads for our closing prayer. Heavenly Father, we come before you at the close of the session with grateful hearts. Thank you for guiding our discussions, for granting us the wisdom to deliberate with respect and for allowing us to serve our people with purpose. As we adjourn, we entrust you the outcomes of today's meeting. May the decision we have, we bring lasting benefit to our constituents and reflect the values of good governance, justice and compassion. Continue to bless our community, our leaders and every family we are called to serve. Bless us as we go on our separate ways. Guide us with your wisdom and keep us safe until we gather again. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.